Welcome to the regular meeting of the Cape Coral City Council. Today is December 7th, 2022. This meeting now comes to order. Please stand for the invocation and pledge allegiance by Councilmember Shepherd.
Heavenly Father, we ask that you help the families that had damage to their homes and their businesses. Give them the strength in their efforts to rebuild. We ask that you help and guide the leaders of our community in making the right decisions for this community. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor Gunter.
Here.
Councilmembers Cosdine.
Here.
Cummings.
Here.
Hayden.
Here.
Long.
Here.
Shepherd.
Here.
Steinke.
Here.
Welsh.
Here.
All present.
Item five is changes to the agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda? Or do we have a motion to adopt them as presented?
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Shepherd.
Aye.
Steinke.
Aye.
Welsh.
Aye.
Cosdine.
Aye.
Cummings.
Aye.
Gunter.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Long.
Aye.
Eight ayes, motion carried.
Item six is recognitions and achievements. We do not have any listed. Item seven is approval of the minutes. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes from the special meeting in November 17th, excuse me, November 16th, 2022?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes from a regular meeting in November 16th, 2022?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes for the regular meeting in November 18th, 2022?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item eight, citizens input time and maximum of 60 minutes is set for the input of citizens on matters concerning city government. Three minutes per individual. Please remember to state your name. We'll utilize the podium to my left in front of the double door. Anyone wishing to participate in citizens input?
Evening, council. My name's John Mealy Southwest. First, I'd like to start with thanking all the city employees and everybody that worked so hard during the hurricane to keep us safe and to get things cleaned up. It's looking pretty good. I'd only say that the issue on the black bags that you couldn't pack stuff in, the word didn't get out. We had no power for 10 or 12 days, no TV, no nothing. And when the word got out, everybody put them in there and they were just told to cut them open and empty them. We have clouds of gnats down in the southwest now from that endeavor. Anyway, I read about the utility recommendation and that the staff recommends a 58.14% increase in utility rates over five years, starting in March. Now, if you have a bill of 99.65, it's going to cost you at the end of five years $152.12. They want to fund the master plan, capital improvements, operational costs, debt service. I'm guessing one of the debt service items might be the $60 million park thing that we're already paying for. And I don't know, it almost sounds like it's unacceptable that we haven't had an increase in utilities since 2013. Yet, I've owned property here since 91. I moved here permanently in 2004. The millage rate is double what it was in 2004, and I'm paying another $680 a year in public safety tax or fees. The usage rate, it says that we're number one ahead of some cities or something. And I was just wondering, did they compilate what happens when the UEP goes into the rest of the northwest and northeast, whatever's out there? If that was computed in there? Why, I've heard it before, offered up as impact fees for new construction, commercial, everything that come in that's going to affect whatever part of the city or county they're in. And if it has to, road widening, if it's public safety increase because of population, et cetera. But I didn't hear of any of that. This is proposed right at the beginning of when they say it's going to be a five-year period for this area to recover from the hurricane. And I don't know what it's going to cost other people, but I can tell you the losses that I incurred are going to cost me, the non-insured losses after I pay horrendous wind deductible or initial thing. It's going to cost me about $50,000 bucks. So I think with all of that expense and stuff coming in the city trying to recover, this is not the time to start a brand-new tax, starting in March. And...
Go ahead, wrap it up, sir, please.
Excuse me?
Your three minutes has been up, so just go ahead and wrap it up, please. Anyone else? Just go ahead and get in line and...
Hi. Most of you guys know me. I'm Paul Barnes, the owner of Hawaiian Contractor. Thirty-three-year resident at Cape Coral, 10 years in business. I'm here to address the elephant in the room. When are we going to fire Rob Hernandez? When are we going to stop with having a golden parachute plan where every one of these city managers come in, they do a terrible job, awful job, response to hurricane was nowhere near what we expected, and this guy gets paid out when he gets fired or quits? This is ridiculous. Why can't we go back to a mayor, council, former government? Why can't we? Is it because you guys need him? No offense to the council, I respect most of you, but is it because you guys need a $200,000 scapegoat? Is that why? Because from what I'm seeing, it's not working out. The city manager, former government's not working for our city. And on top of that, let's talk about unlicensed activity. Wow, that was an issue before the hurricane, and man, I can't go two blocks and I've seen 80 vehicles, no license numbers, nobody's enforcement squad. But yet, us licensed contractors, man, we better pull a permit, you better make sure you renew your business tax license at city, or I get threatening emails. Yet, what are you guys doing to protect us licensed contractors? Or the homeowners that are being duped into hiring these people with fake license numbers on their Vista Print business cards? What are you guys doing? What's the city manager doing? Really? I mean, we're fed up. When is enough going to be enough? I mean, how many times do I have to come here and talk to you guys about this? And permitting department? I stopped doing doors and windows because I can't get a permit 14 weeks before the hurricane for a permit. I don't even want to think what it is now. You've got city employees leaving in hordes right now. All your long-term employees are leaving. You know this, I know this. The general public doesn't know this. I mean, the city's falling apart. Nobody wants to work for the city. I saw the ad for utility workers for the road, 15 bucks an hour? Really? You think people are going to want to go to work to the city for 15 bucks an hour? When they can be working for an unlicensed contractor making 20, 25 an hour? Why don't we, the state licensed contractors of Florida, going to get some protection from our own city? When is Rob Hernandez going to start doing a job? I mean, there's too much liberal agenda going on with him and several people on the board, and we're tired of it. Lots of people agree with me. A lot of people don't realize that the mayor and the council don't run the city, he does. And he's doing an awful job. This isn't Miami. We don't want to be Miami. Home Depot looks like Miami. Cameras, day workers, illegal contractors everywhere, and what are you guys doing about it? Absolutely nothing. Why did I spend the money and time to become a state licensed contractor if you're not going to enforce the rules? Why? Why do any of us need to have a license and pull permits if you're not going to enforce the rules? When are you going to get a city manager in here to actually do his job? Or better yet, go back to a mayor, council, former government? I've had it. I used to be you guys' biggest supporter, get a pull permit, do your job, follow the city rules? Bullshit. I've had enough.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak to one? Come on up, sir. You can use that podium right there if you'd like. That's going to be close. You can use this podium here. It's going to be closer for you.
Is the mic active? Yes, it is.
Yes, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and ladies and gentlemen of Cape Coral Council. My input is non-confrontational. My name is Chris Smallman. I have been a permanent resident of the USA since 2016, have been a taxpayer with property in Cape Coral since 2008. As you hear, I'm British and also an Irish citizen. I live in the southwest Cape, and I'm a retired structural engineer and contractor by profession. This evening, I'd like to ascertain what can be done about the faulty Chiquita lock and request some urgent action to get repairs expedited by the city of Cape Coral as soon as possible. Chiquita lock has not functioned since Hurricane Ian, which was a category four storm, as we all know, that impacted Cape Coral and put the lock out of service 11 weeks ago today, 11 weeks, on September 28th. I understand that the repair problem and that there is, that there is no power or no power source to the lock, which tells me it's essentially an LCEC problem that they need to get hold of and do something about. But as far as I can see, and as far as I've been able to ascertain, nobody is doing anything, nada. I've asked down at the Cape Coral or Cape Harbor area, a lot of times, what's going on? Nothing. We don't know anything. I spoke to the harbor master, nothing to do with us, it's LCEC. What's LCEC doing? Try to get hold of LCEC? Impossible. You might as well try to talk to the wall. This needs to be resolved urgently and quickly, and hopefully with some pressure from your esteemed body in this house. Sorry. It seems to me to be an inordinate duration for such a facility that is as important as this lock is to Cape Coral and the residents to be out of service for the boating fraternity, which is probably in excess of 5,000 boats north of the lock, to the north side of the lock. Think of that, 5,000 people who want to use their boat and get out through the lock. I'm a longtime qualified helmsman of some 40 years experience with large recreation vessels. The present situation is that there are only two times daily at only high and low tides when the lock in its current state can be navigated with any degree of safety at all. And that is at high and low tides, and that's only for an experienced helmsman or others like myself. I've had a European license for 40 years.
Go ahead, wrap it up, sir.
Pardon me?
I said your three minutes is up. Go ahead and wrap it up.
Sorry, I didn't hear.
Your three minutes has ended.
I've got one more paragraph, please.
So if you could read it quickly.
I've tried on one occasion to move my 42-foot trawler through the lock, and due to the very strong current of the oncoming tide, I had to change my plan and return to my dock, as I could not maintain my course and way safely. My boat weighs 39,000 pounds and has 750 horsepower engines. I tried for 10 to 15 minutes to maintain course to pass through the lock, but it was impossible without risking severe damage to my boat. I suggest to you that this is a serious accident waiting to happen.
Thank you, sir.
With the influx of inexperienced boaters arriving here for the season that you...
Go ahead, wrap it up, sir.
Thank you for listening. I'm finished.
Yes.
Can we get something done, please?
Okay. Just have a seat, and we'll have a discussion on this.
Pardon me?
Have a seat. We'll have a discussion. This isn't an open discussion. Is there anyone else wishing to participate? Citizens input, please come forward. CNNon citizens input is now closed. I will open up the floor for council discussion on citizens input. Councilmember Shepherd.
Thank you.
I'm going to ask if the city manager can have someone from staff maybe go through some of the questions that the first speaker had with the water and, you know, what he thinks about impact fees, paying for things, and just a little review so he can understand why we have to do...
Certainly. What I'm going to ask is for Mr. Grambo to grab the gentleman's contact information, and we will contact him and discuss that either in person or on the phone. Or are we looking for us to do that here? Because he asked a lot of questions.
Yeah, he did.
So I think it's better we do it one-on-one, and we're happy to do that.
And the second speaker, could we explain to the public our power, if any, when it comes to trying to control unlicensed contractors in the city?
Yes, council member. And I'm sorry that the gentleman didn't stick around to hear the answer to the question, but I suspect he knows the answer. And he knows that this city has been very active in enforcing the requirements of state law against unlicensed contractors. He's been here before. We've had this conversation before. Ultimately, the responsibility for unlicensed contractor enforcement rests with the state of Florida. However, we use our resources, whether it's the individuals in the code enforcement division, the building division, or even the police department, and we work very closely with the state's Department of Professional Regulation to ensure and crack down on unlicensed contractors that are being hired to do work, either in residential homes or in commercial establishments. In addition, we have consistently put out public messaging, as recently, I think, as just a couple of days ago, where there was something in our On the Move newsletter, again reminding homeowners that, of the restrictions against using unlicensed contractors, and to be aware of fraudulent activity, especially in light of the fact that, you know, so many of us have hurricane-related damage and are struggling to repair that damage. But ultimately, it is the responsibility of the property owner who is engaging directly with that contractor to determine if that person is licensed or not. And there are very many people in the community that knowingly hire individuals that are unlicensed. And so that continues to be a problem. It always has been a problem, will continue to be a problem in the future, not just in Cape Coral, but all over this state. And so while I recognize the fact that, yes, there are unlicensed contractors working throughout the city, just like that there are speeders throughout the city, and you can't catch everybody, and we can't be everywhere at all times, and so we really need the public's help in not doing business with individuals that are not licensed.
Thank you.
I hope I answered your question, councilman.
You did. Thank you.
Councilmember Hayden.
To the gentleman's concerns over the Chiquita lock, I wasn't aware until a couple weeks ago that the lock was without power. Because of storm surge out there and saltwater intrusion, much of the mechanisms...
This isn't an open conversation.
When I finish, I'm going to ask Mr. Ilchism maybe to explain this to you outside so you can hear better. I understand you're having difficulty hearing, but because of saltwater intrusion, most of the mechanisms involved in the lock were destroyed. So until those mechanisms are repaired, power cannot be restored to the lock. So it's kind of a two-step process, and I know our public works director has made it a priority to get this lock repaired so that power can be restored, so we can make sure that it works. We know the dangerous situations that exist with that lock, that it's almost impossible to get a boat through there because of the tides. So they are working on it. You haven't been forgotten. And if you didn't understand or couldn't hear what I was saying, I'm sure Mr. Ilchism will explain it to you as well. But, you know, it's kind of, we've got to repair it before we can restore power to it and get it working. Thanks.
Councilmember Cummings.
Yes, speaking about the Chiquita lock, I've heard this from several people. Mike, do you know what the timeframe is on this Chiquita lock? Because we do have a lot of boaters that are wanting to get this open. So could you help us a little bit? Thank you.
I'd like to respond to your question. As you know, the city has been actively seeking a permit to remove the Chiquita lock, and that goes back several years. We were on the verge of receiving a permit. It was challenged and ultimately overturned. For the last two years, two and a half years or so, we have been going through the process to obtain a new permit. That's where we are today. We are hopefully close to receiving that permit, but we cannot give you a timeframe as to when you can expect to receive some sort of answer from the state and from the Army Corps of Engineers. I say all that to say that because we are actively seeking to remove the lock, we are very judicious in what we do to, from here on out, to make any repairs to the lock, understanding that the electrical damage is just one component of the damage that that facility expanded. It was, I estimate it was about under four feet of water. All the electrical components are gone, and that is an old facility. In addition, we have not assessed the condition of all of the mechanical components, to include, I call them the wheels, the locks themselves, there are two of them, and as you know, they were in bad condition before the storm, and we don't know what kind of condition they're in now. So we're being very careful in how we go about strategizing repairs, given the fact that we are actively seeking the removal of that lock.
Okay. So my next question, because I know that a lot of boaters are starting to get a little upset, like he's saying. So knowing that there's a process with these permits, the mechanisms, things that need repaired, is there anything that can be done to get the lock open so these boaters can come in and out and then worry about the permits and repairing the lock at a later date?
I think the first step in that process would be to do a comprehensive inspection, and I'm sure our staff has either done that or is in the process of doing that to determine what components need to be replaced. But I guarantee you that because it was under, completely submerged, everything, and the way it's designed, all of the electrical components actually sat below the control house there. So all of that was underwater. All of that is going to need to be replaced. And so the question then becomes, do we replace all of that to get the lock operating for a very short period of time? Are the parts even still available? Because that structure is a very old structure. And again, all that does is restore the electricity, and then what? We have to determine what condition the mechanical components are in, and if those wheels are damaged...
Have we had anyone even look at this to see what the cost to cost just to repair it, to at least try to get this open?
I am not aware that we have actually gone in the water with divers, and I am not aware that we have completed an assessment of the condition of the electrical components there.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Yeah. My concern, Mr. City Manager, with this, and I understand where you're coming from to some extent, you know, we don't want to spend money on something that we may take out a couple months later. I've been sitting on this council for five years, and we've been trying to take this lockout for five years. My other concern is, as we experienced in the last permitting process, even if the lock permit is approved by the FDEP, then it can still be appealed. And we know there's an appeal process that goes along with that. So my concern is, you know, for, since this is the only access for boaters, have we written a letter to FDEP to make them aware of the situation that we find ourselves in post-hurricane Ian? So they know the predicament that we're really in, because as many of the other speakers have said, there's only a short period of time where you can navigate through that lock and do it safely. So my concern is, number one, someone will try to do it when it is unsafe to do so, and we could be liable. So, and also, knowing the process, this is something that may not happen in the short term. So I think that for me, we should do that assessment to see, number one, what the repairs would be, what the cost would be in the short term, if we see that this process is going to go on longer than we anticipated, like it has for the last five years for me.
So let me address one of your questions, Mr. Mayor, with respect to, you specifically asked, have we written a letter to DEP? No, we have not written a letter. However, they are very much aware of the circumstances at Chiquita lock post-hurricane. In fact, within a day or so of Hurricane Ian, we were in communication with their staff, and we notified them that the lock is stuck in the open position. They are very much aware, and I don't want to speak for them, so I'm just going to stop there and just say that they are very much aware of the conditions at the lock. My concern also with timing, I share your concern, but as you know, it could take just as long to repair that lock as it will be to finish the permitting process. And I'm hoping that the permitting process will wrap up fairly soon, but I don't know for a fact. But we will look into the, you know, the assessment of the electrical components and what it's going to take and how much it's going to cost to replace all of those components. And again, that just gets us to the point where we can go ahead and examine the wheels. And, you know, if the wheels are damaged, that's entirely different conversation that we will be having in the near future.
So will you be able to get that assessment completed?
I will speak with Mr. Ilchism tomorrow about making sure that we accelerate that assessment.
And you'll forward that all to council once that assessment's completed?
Absolutely.
Thank you. Councilmember Steinke.
Has there been an assessment, since this is a city facility, whether this would be an insurable loss?
I have to ask Mr. Mason if he's in the room.
We're looking into it. It's, you know, from a, and I do believe the lock is insured. It'll have the wind damage, it'll have everything else associated with it, and what we may or may not be able to recover from that, we'll look at it. The reason for the question is if it's an insurable loss, then it won't be so much of a financial risk if, in fact, we do get our permit, we can pull out the lock, even if it's a matter of just a few months where we have safe boat traffic through the lock, then we should focus on the safety more than the concern about the financial loss if, in fact, is an insurable, you know, repair.
Yeah. Councilmember, I don't want you to think at all that this is about any financial implications whatsoever. That's really the last thing that's on our mind. I think what we're looking at is, you know, how quickly can these repairs be made? Will we have to get special permits and permission from FDEP to make these repairs, especially in light of the fact that all indications are that we are all headed to the finish line, which is to get that lock removed at some point?
Thank you.
And because of the possibility of litigation associated with this matter, my answers are probably a little bit more ambiguous than you would like, but given the fact that we could... But given the fact that we could end up in litigation, I, in order to protect the city's interests, I'm, I'm going to respond in that way. But I'm happy to respond to you with a little bit more detail in, in person.
Okay, any other questions regarding citizens' input? Seeing none, we'll move on to item 9A is the consent agenda. I'll now open up that consent agenda for council to pool any items for discussion, or if there's no items to pool, to get a motion for approval for the consent agenda.
Motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
Is there any council discussion? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Shepherd.
Aye.
Steinkie.
Aye.
Welsh.
Aye.
Cosden.
Aye.
Cummings.
Aye.
Gunter.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Long.
Aye.
Eight ayes, motion carried.
Okay, item 9B is appointments to boards and committees. B1 is the audit committee. We have one vacancy and three applicants. Madam City Clerk.
Yes, Your Honor, for the audit committee vacancy, we have three applicants, Pam Austin, Heather Boyle, and William Matthews. Both Pam Austin and William Matthews were unable to attend today, but they are both very eager to be appointed and serve. Heather Boyle is in the audience today, if you wish to do any interviewing. I have been asked to clarify one thing on Ms. Boyle's application. A box was incorrectly checked. She is a citizen of the United States.
Okay. Thank you very much. Do we want to give one, two minutes for that individual? One minute? One minute? Okay.
Heather Boyle.
Hi, my name's Heather Boyle. I've lived in Cape Coral since I was seven years old. I graduated from FGCU with a bachelor's in accounting degree, bachelor's in accounting. And I have finished the CPM program at FGCU. I have currently worked for the Lee County Clerk of Courts in the finance torrent for the last 17 years. In my current role, I oversee a staff of 12 AP clerks. Based on my job description and different information, I'm very familiar with governmental accounting standards, IRS regulations, internal controls for external and internal auditors. Part of my job description is also to implement, test, and develop different financial internal controls. I believe that being part of a committee like this is a right to, you know, as a citizen of the city, and I just look forward to participating.
Thank you very much. Any questions for Ms. Boyle? Thank you, ma'am. Okay, Madam City Clerk, I guess we'll do like we normally do. We'll go down, and each council member will give their choice, and we'll do it in our voting order of tonight's meeting.
I have one question first.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I noticed on the agenda it said the term expires 12/1/2022. Is that the term that just expired? And then for how long is this that we're voting for?
Four years, and yes, the term just expired on December 1st.
Thank you. And did you say four years?
Four.
And can you name the names?
Certainly. In alphabetical order, we have Pam Austin, Heather Boyle, and William Matthews. Shepherd.
Austin.
Steinkie.
Matthews.
Welsh.
Austin.
Cosden.
Austin.
Cummings.
Austin.
Gunter.
Austin.
Hayden. Long.
Boyle.
So that is six for Austin, one for Boyle, and one for Matthews.
Do we have a motion to appoint Ms. Austin to the Audit Committee Board?
Motion to appoint.
Second.
Is there any council discussion? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Shepherd.
Aye.
Steinkie.
Aye.
Welsh.
Aye.
Cosden.
Aye.
Cummings.
Aye.
Gunter.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Long.
Aye.
Eight ayes, motion carried.
Okay, item 9B2 is health facility authority. We have one vacancy and one applicant. Madam City Clerk.
Yes, we have one applicant to fill a short-term vacancy based on the passing of the prior member. Ms. Adriana Lee Swanson is present today, if council would like to interview.
Okay, we have one applicant and one vacancy. So do we want to hear the applicant, or is there a motion on the floor?
Motion to approve Swanson.
Second. Any council discussion? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Shepherd.
Aye.
Steinkie.
Aye.
Welsh.
Aye.
Cosden.
Aye.
Cummings.
Aye.
Gunter.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Long.
Aye.
Eight ayes, motion carried.
Item 9C is unfinished business. C1 is follow-up items for council. We do not have any listed. Is there any follow-up items for council? Seeing none, we'll move on to C2. This was a carryover from our committee of the whole meeting last week, and it's a discussion on Chapter 2 and Chapter 19 revision. Mr. City Manager.
Mr. Mayor, since you introduced the item quite well, I'm just going to turn it over to our Financial Services Director, Mark Mason, to take it from here.
Thank you. Now, if we only had Mr. Mason. I don't think he's in the room. Would you like to continue this? And bring this up at another time?
Yes, if we could move it to the end of the agenda, Mr. Mayor, I apologize for that.
Okay, I will do that. So we'll move on to item 9D is new business, and it's a updated 2023 meeting calendar. Madam City Clerk.
Yes, Your Honor, I have put in front of you at your spots the updated 2023 city council meeting schedule. We have adjusted the retreat dates to January 26, 2023, beginning at 9:00, and January 27, 2023, beginning at 9:00, and eliminating the 19th and 20th. I've also tweaked the, the notification of the workshop, the Youth Council Joint Meeting with City Council to read workshop instead of special meeting. It enables advertising to be a little less costly and expeditious. So I was looking to see if council would approve the updated schedule presented today.
Thank you. I'll open the floor up. Do we have any discussions on this topic? Or do I have a motion to approve the new calendars presented?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Shepherd.
Aye.
Steinkie.
Aye.
Welsh.
Aye.
Cosden.
Aye.
Cummings.
Aye.
Gunter.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Long.
Aye.
Eight ayes, motion carried.
Okay, I think we'll circle back to item 9C2, Mr. City Manager. Chapter 2 and Chapter 19 revisions. Good evening, Mr. Mason. How are you tonight?
I'm doing great.
Appreciate you being here.
I appreciate that. Thank you, Mayor. I was here. Take a couple of seconds to get this thing up and running.
I know that if I'm not mistaken, Mr. Mason, you have two versions of your presentation.
I do. I'm loading up the long version. Which one do we want?
And I know you've had conversations this week and, and last week as well on this topic. So we have a long version and a short version that I know council have received both. So I guess maybe we'll go down the line like we did before to see if we want the long version or the short version. We'll start with Councilmember Cosden.
The long version.
Short version's good enough for me.
I'm okay with either one.
Short.
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 Short's fine.
Okay, it looks like short wins.
Okay, I have the long version up, but the first pages are the same, and then I'll just skip right to the end. How's that sound? Thank you. All right, so the, we have two items here. Chapter 2, which is the administrative, administrative section of the Code of Ordinances in Chapter 19, which is the utilities section of the ordinance, or chapters of the ordinance. And we have a couple of, actually several items that we're looking at changing. Specifically in Chapter 2, it's to essentially make the same financing mechanisms that are in Chapter 19 the same in Chapter 2. It's supposed to have two different financing mechanisms. They're going to be basically both the same. So Chapter 2 is primarily about changing the process for how we do the capital expansion fee financing from a voluntary lien process to a non-adverbal installment process. Essentially what we've been doing for the last several years, but now we're actually codifying it, making it permanent, and what we're looking at doing. At the same time, we're looking at changing delinquent utility capital expansion fee collection process from an involuntary lien process and putting it into the non-adverbal installments on the tax bill as well. In both cases, this real, this aligns up our collection methods with same type of fees that we do in other areas. In addition, we're looking, changing the financing term to six equal installments, to its six equal principal installments with interest to, again, align this with other fee, fee financing terms that we have within the Code of Ordinances. At the same time, we're getting rid of all the, the, any of the references to the legacy loans that we have in the system, as well as removing any of the foreclosure language, because you'd only need a foreclosure language if we were not putting it on the, on the, utilizing the tax bill method. Chapter 19 is, is, is much more comprehensive in some of the things that we're looking to do with regard to the changes. And specifically in this case, we're looking at utility accounts. In general, when a property is sold, we generally, we, normally when a property is sold, the, any outstanding balances are usually picked up as part of the sale price, and is usually paid off as part of that program. However, that's not always the case, and it doesn't, and when it doesn't happen, we run into the problems of trying to collect it from the current owner because our utility bills run as liens on the property. They don't run as liens associated with the property owner itself. And so, and this is statutory with regard to the lien process and utility bills, as long as you have debt outstanding on the utility system. And so part of the, one of the changes we're recommending to make here is that, you know, any previous owner balances would automatically be moved over to a new owner within 30 days of the balance transferred to the new owner, you know, if they're not paid off as part of the sale price of the property. This is the only time it occurs when there is actually a change of ownership. It's not, we wouldn't be moving it over because, you know, there's only one reason to do it, and it's with a change of ownership. Also, we're looking at allowing the utility system to do a utility credit check process for, in, for doing, for putting in place deposits associated with new accounts. This is consistent with what other utilities are basically doing. It certainly is consistent with how LCEC processes their deposit program. And so we're looking at putting this in place associated with the change in, in, in the, the, the new deposits that we'd be looking to put into place as part of the rate changes that we'd be bringing forward to you in February. The, so we would put in place this credit check and give that option, and then we would have the, if they have good credit history, we could waive the deposit. If they don't, you know, the, you know, whatever the dollar value of the deposit will be will be associated with that. And so the cost of the credit check would then be billed on the customer's account, whatever that number is, I believe, same, very similar to what LCEC does as well. As well as other utility systems are getting into the same approach to how they set deposits. In addition, in 1938, and we have two sections in the Code of Ordinances today that call for something called a contribution in aid of construction. One is in 1938, and the other one is in 1955. And we're looking at combining these two. In 1955 is called the extension policy, and 1938 is within the rates and charges associated whatever the, the contribution in aid of construction fee is. So by combining these both into the extension policy, it makes it simpler for anybody that's going in there and looking at whatever the rate might be and whatever the charge might be, and how that extension policy works, we'll be able to just simply look at one location in the, in the Code of Ordinances, as opposed to having to go to two different locations. In addition, we're recommending the change in methodology for the contribution in aid of construction fees from a capacity-based system to a square foot method. This modification realigns the CAC fees with the UEP's assessment methodology, and it will allow for a much more uniform approach when we're addressing any splits and combines when it comes to parcels. And so, in effect, in 2013, we went to a capacity-based system, which in effect is an impact fee. And we're looking to come back to the, a square foot method or a land-based method in making a determination of what the contribution in aid of construction fee should be. We would also delete the, the CAC fee table, add language that CAC fees will be based on the most recent council-approved UEP project. Again, this creates uniformity across the system, so we're only looking at one fee whenever the new, whenever we actually put in place a new UEP, whatever that might be. Change the method in which the property owner can then finance the CAC fees from a paper build loan program to, again, a voluntary lien with regard to putting the installments on the tax bill. Again, this is very consistent with what we're currently doing with the assessments, as well as the CFECs, fees. And again, by putting it on the tax bill, there's no lien against the property itself with regard to the CECCAC fees. It's on an annual basis associated with the tax bill. Again, we would be looking at changing the delinquent CAC fee collection process, again, creating the, and making it consistent with the, how we do the CFEC fees as well as the, the utility assessments. We would also remove any, any references to foreclosure actions. This is, again, consistent with the fact that if we don't have a loan, there's no reason for us to foreclose. Add language again to, for CAC deferrals for large projects. This allows developers to then pray up on a pro-rata basis with regard to CACs on building permits issued. This is something that where we would be adding language to the program. This is not something that the program currently has. As well as reinstating the oversized parcel discount if the city, at the city's discretion, for anything that's over two acres. So this is all of the changes that I would normally go through with the very long version, so I'll kind of go all the way through to the end. Too far. Sorry about that. All right, so the next steps would be to approve these Chapter 2 changes, and we would introduce this next week on the 14th with a public hearing on January 11, 2023. Sorry about the scrivener area for 2022. And then we would have the effective date upon the adoption of the, of the ordinance. Same time, Chapter 19 changes, again, would be introduced next week on the 14th with the final public hearing on January 11, 2022. This is what we would have talked about last week, but we had the opportunity to talk about it tonight. So I'm available for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Mason. I'll open the floor up for any discussions on this topic. And just remember, this is not a voting tonight. It'll be an introduction and public hearings after this meeting. Seeing none, thank you, Mr. Mason. Appreciate the presentation.
Thank you very much. I appreciate the opportunity, Mr. Mayor.
We'll move on to item 9E, personnel actions. We do not have any personnel actions listed. 9F, petitions to council. We do not have any petitions listed. Item 9G, follow-up items from the city management. G1 is Hurricane Ian recovery update. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We're going to give you a really brief update on where we are with hurricane recovery efforts. First, we'll have the city's emergency management manager, Mr. Alvin Henderson, come up to the podium, and then we'll have our staff from Public Works, Michael Ilchiz and Terry, and Terry come up, give you an overview of where we are with debris removal. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Alvin Henderson, Emergency Management Division Manager. The emergency management staff and our recovery team members remain deeply engaged on our recovery efforts citywide. Our objectives have remained the same, that of being life safety, property environmental protection, and trying to minimize the adverse impact on our community. Some of the most notable activities occurring is the Some of the most notable activities occurring is the disaster recovery center at Lake Kennedy remains open, and looking at the statistical data from FEMA, it remains in the top three as far as activity that is ongoing at the DRC within Southwest Florida. So our residents are taking advantage of the disaster recovery center and working with all the partners and FEMA representatives that are at the DRC. Additionally, the Small Business Administration remains at the Kiwanis Center, they are focusing on businesses, but also on individuals as well. This past week, we have had representatives from the American Red Cross also at the DRC, they have a program called immediate assistance, and they've been helping with that program when those individuals come in for assistance at the DRC and are in need of immediate assistance, there is that program that is now available to them from the American Red Cross. Additionally, this afternoon, I just received information from the Small Business Administration that they have announced that they are going to waive the interest rate for the first year on new disaster loans, and extend the initial payment deferment period automatically to twelve months. So what that is, for residents that take advantage of that program, that the borrower, borrowers will now have up to one year from the date of the note to begin making payments instead of the standard five months, and then also, the interest on a loan will not begin to accrue until twelve months from the date of the initial loan dispersment. So that is additional assistance, then, that the Small Business Administration is making available to people that come in for that assistance. As I said, we remain deeply engaged with our recovery efforts. The next area that we can look at will be from a cost recovery of, Mr. Mason's still in the room here, I'll ask him to come up and give a brief overview from the cost recovery, and then also, Terry is here as well to give a brief overview on where we're at with the debris removal process and where we stand in that process. Before I turn the mic over, do you have any questions for me?
Thank you, sir, any questions? Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mason.
Councilmember Stanky, I'm sorry, I just saw your light on.
No problem, I did have one quick question. Do we stand anywhere in communications with FEMA in regard to locations that would be suitable for their temporary housing trailers to come into our community, and if so, what kind of a timeline are we looking on that?
Yes, we remain in constant communication through both, I should say, through all three agencies, Lee County Emergency Management, Florida Division of Emergency Management, and the Federal Emergency Management Agency. We've provided information on possible locations, I know that they have gone out and looked at those, most of those locations, if not all at this point, they had a briefing last Friday with really, unfortunately, no new information on what I call trailers on the ground in our community, so we are requesting a follow-up meeting with them to hopefully take place, if not this week, early next week, to try to get some definitive answers on when can we expect to see those trailers landing and getting set up within our community.
Okay, I appreciate that, I, I was privy to some information yesterday that evidently FEMA has indicated that they will, they are not willing to put one of their, you know, temporary living quarters in an area that would can, would be considered a special hazard zone. And so, whatever locations we've talked about with them, if any of those happen to be in those areas, that could cause us an issue, just FYI.
Correct, and, and some of that is twofold. If we look at congregant housing units being placed, a lot of those locations were in the northern part of the city, but mainly our ask of FEMA was to let residents bring those travel units or temporary housing units into their property, so they can stay local to the community, maintain their residency at their homes, be able to watch over their homes, and also, you know, work with the contractors to get their homes repaired as quickly as possible. And obviously, some of those home areas are in flood-prone areas, so we'll keep working with FEMA to try to see if they would lighten those rules some, you know, based on past practices that we're aware of.
Okay, thank you.
So just a quick update from a cost recovery standpoint, I give you a comprehensive look at this last week, last Wednesday, but since that timeframe, we've put in the request for reimbursement on two of the expedited projects, takes about ten to fourteen days for the state to process the money, so we haven't gotten, received cash yet. At the same time, we've just put in a, a, a third one that was submitted, was approved last week, it'll get, it'll take its way to wind its, wind its way down to the state, and then we'll put in a request for that funding as well. And then a third one, a fourth one was put in yesterday, this was a, the second tranche of the debris. We put it in for twenty-one million, so if it comes in, it'll be about ten and a half million. We have yet to receive our first bill for debris yet, but we expect something, hopefully, before the end, at the middle of December. And so, from a cost recovery standpoint, they, we also had a scoping briefing with FEMA yesterday. This kicks off the thirty-day timeframe for us to develop project worksheets, develop everything, we gave them a preliminary damage assessment for priority facilities, and we'll continue to work up the, the damage assessment over that, over the sixty-day timeframe. If we need more time, we can always apply for additional time, but our goal is to try to get all the damage assessment information in there by the end of the sixty days.
Thank you, Mr. Mason, any questions, Councilmember Stanky?
Um, any update on where?
Apologize, any, any update on where we are on either the extension of our, our seventy, of our, of our hundred percent, or moving to a ninety-ten instead of a seventy-five-twenty-five, where today's the day, I think, isn't it? Today is the day for the extension that expires on the fifteen-day extension. As far as the ninety-ten, I don't expect anything to come in for at least a couple of weeks that has been requested, and I expect that it will likely happen. I've never seen it not happen for a storm this size, but we have not received notification that it has occurred yet. But it'll be retroactive, so if it ever happens, it'll, it, it will cover for the entire storm. We do not, and I, at this point, if they haven't extended the, the timeframe for the hundred percent, I'm not sure that they will, but they might.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Mason? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Mayor, Council, Terry Schweitzer, South Waste Manager, City of Cape Coral. Brief update on where we're at with picking up debris. As of this morning, three hundred and eighty-one thousand seven hundred and fifty-six cubic yards of C and D has been collected of the estimated three hundred and twenty-five thousand, so we're over that estimate. Vegetation, one, one million four hundred and four thousand seven hundred and eighty-two of the one point four million of vegetation has been collected. Canals, twenty-four thousand one hundred and seventy-six cubic yards of the two hundred thousand estimated cubic yards. Right now, in the city streets are still about a hundred and twenty units a day collecting debris. As we get through this, we had at one point a high of about a hundred and eighty was the average, and so we, it has dropped because there's less of that material out there. There's currently twelve canal crews working, and we're looking to add another crews as we move into the Christmas break, and then after fifteen to seventeen total crews working in the canals, removing debris. Just some interesting notes to talk about, so the Northwest, I'm going to talk about the debris sites a little bit, the Northwest vegetation site has taken in two hundred and fifty thousand cubic yards of vegetation, Skyline Site has taken in eight hundred and eight thousand cubic yards of vegetation, the Southwest C and D site took in three hundred and three thousand cubic yards of vegetation, the Northeast Combined Site has had three hundred and fifty thousand cubic yards of vegetation and seventy-eight thousand cubic yards of C and D. So there's been a lot of debris put into those debris sites. We have been hauling out for quite some time now, we've hauled out over a thousand loads, and this is reduced debris, a hundred and eight thousand cubic yards of reduced debris. So with that being said, Waste Pro is back to full service, minus the appliances, that will happen later this month, once we get the debris appliances collected. Citizen Bulk Site reopened yesterday and is accepting bulk only at this time and non-storm, non-storm-related bulk debris. Storm-related requests, we've received at three-one-one call center, a little over two thousand calls, which is averaging about sixty-four calls a day, and we've received two hundred and fifty calls for tote replacement. In talks with Waste Pro, we're estimating about ten thousand totes need to be replaced, they're not going to get done overnight, there will be a timeframe to get those done, they have to get them ordered, manufacturers got to make them, fit them into their, manufacturers have to fit them into their schedules, so that is the process works at the manufacturing plant, they've already have cart delivery or cart orders pre-planned, thousands and thousands, depending on where municipalities are, are businesses, so they have to start rearranging their plans to get these carts manufactured and then get them here. A truckload roughly is about seven hundred and fifty carts, so when you start doing the math, that's a lot of, a lot of semi-trailers full of carts that have to come to Cape Coral to get those replaced, so we are working with Waste Pro on that.
And before, and before the hurricane, there was a national shortage to begin with, there were long lead times to get the, the carts from the manufacturers, so now with the hurricane, that's just, you know, it's been, it's been extended even further.
So it, it will be a challenge, Waste Pro is aware, you know, they know that they have to pick up debris or garbage in, in bags and whatever type of containers that they have on the street to get that done. A little note about the resident sites, the Southwest C and D site that we had for resident drop-off, we've brought, they brought in a little over ten thousand cubic yards on, residents have on their own. Don't have numbers for the Northwest, and that's only because we don't measure what's coming in, and that has, that'll be measured when it gets hauled out, once it's ground up or, or disposed, that we'll have those numbers. Some miscellaneous items, we do have a state liaison in, in the annex that can handle commercial debris removal questions, can handle personal or private property debris removal questions, so we're working with him, and as those requests come in, or, and he's been out in town working with our businesses and HOAs and other locations to work through and get the state to contract to get those collected. We are collecting the vegetation from commercial right-of-ways, and also, city crews are collecting storm debris in the medians on our major city roads, and there was just, we just submitted our fourteen-day approval for the commercial, there's, there was a fourteen-day period that we had to apply for that came out just before Thanksgiving, to give us a two-week window that the state would, or, the, the state and FEMA would, would cover the cost of vegetation removal in front of apartment buildings, condominiums, in hotels that have less than thirty rooms. So we're, we're planning, we're working with the debris removal company to get that planned, we asked, we, we plan on starting this Friday and working through right to the Christmas break to get that done. So that's pretty much what I have, any, any questions?
I, I have one question either for you or Mr. City Manager, we had this discussion last week when I had asked what the plan was for either a residence that it appears that they haven't did any debris cleanup, whether they're here, probably not here, and also, what are we going to be doing? I, I understand that the commercial lots as far as C and D were not picking those, that material up, only the vegetation, so what's our plan with that as far as notifying those commercial property owners of exactly what we will and what we will not be doing? And in addition to, like I had mentioned, the residential property owners throughout the city who may not be here, who may not be aware, I think we had had this discussion last week, and if I recall correctly, you were meeting with staff last week to, to have that discussion, so can you enlighten us any, any more since last week?
So, Mr. Mayor, let me address the first part, and Terry can address the, the issue with C and D from the commercial properties. So we are doing a variety of efforts to address the, the residual piles of trash that may be out there, to include utilizing our code enforcement officers to make site visits, but also, not necessarily to cite the property owners, but to send them a friendly reminder that there is debris on their side of the property line that the city will not remove, that it's their responsibility to clear up, to clean up their yards, their swales, and to put all of those items in the right-of-way so we can pick it up. In addition to that, as a result of, of those, the broader conversation about trash and debris, we're also holding, hosting a community-wide effort on Friday led by city employees and Keep Lee County Beautiful, where we are going into, not necessarily neighborhoods, but probably the more high-visibility corridors to do litter and debris removal on, on Friday. And then, Terry, would you address the mayor's question with C and D from commercial properties?
Absolutely, so, that is correct, C and D on commercial property is not, at this point, covered by any agency for the storm debris. We are, I know the state liaison that we have here has visited a number of properties and gone and talked to them about it, as he's been out in town and spotted it, and let them know their options, as the calls come in, we're letting them know the options, working with Communications Department to get messaging out, and it's, it's going to be a concerted effort with everybody, but they're, they really have two options, they can talk to the state, and as we know, the state can come on there, and if they fill out the proper forms and take care of that debris for them, there is, they, they're going to have to work through with their insurance company, the state's going to request those item, their insurance information, and the state's going to also talk to the insurance company about covering proceeds to have it done, or they, they can hire their own contractor to come and pick it up. I mean, those really, right now, are the two options on a commercial property, and we're doing our, our best at this point to get the word out to as many people as we can.
And that's the reason I, I brought that up, you know, I think, you know, notifying the commercial businesses exactly what our position is, because, you know, you ride around the city, you do see several piles throughout the city, so I just want to make sure they're aware, because I don't want them to think that we are coming to pick it up, and we're not, and to make sure that they have the avenues that are available to them to get that debris picked up. And secondarily, you know, at some point, I, I remember Hurricane Irma when I was here, at some point, we will cease picking up debris in the city, and at that point, it will revert back to the homeowner or the business owner to remove that debris, so I think that's why it's key to make sure that notification is made, because, you know, we're seventy days into this process, which I would venture to say, we're, we're over halfway through this, and there's going to come a point in time where that service will cease, so I just want to make sure that our residents and our businesses take, take the opportunity that's, that's there now to benefit them and, and our city. So that's why I asked that question.
And before, Mr. Mayor, we do the third pass, otherwise known, known as the final pass, we will make sure that we amp up our messaging to let people know that this is going to be the final pass for hurricane-related debris, all right? And then, any other bulk items, like for residential customers, that, that's going to be on, on Waste Pro, but for hurricane-related debris, that would be the last pass, and the monitors are, you know, they pretty much can tell whether it's hurricane-related or not, and if it's not hurricane-related, it won't get picked up. And so, again, we will amp up our messaging, hurricane-related debris, this is it, last pass, after that, you know, the property owner's going to be on, on their own, or they'll have to use alternative methods.
Thank you, Councilmember Cummings.
Yes, so last week, you know how we were discussing the black bag issue? It's back, so... So I understand Waste Pro is picking up the black bags. However, some residents that I talked to, they declined the back, black bags. So I feel like, once again, there's a huge miscommunication going on out there because when I drive down these streets, I see just piles and piles of black bags. And I've talked to a couple people and they, they stated that we'll open up the bags so Waste Pro can look in it. So I relayed the message. Nothing, they said they can't touch the black bags. So with Waste Pro, as there are some people that's saying they'll grab the black bags and the others are saying, no, we're not doing the black bags. Because I just want to make sure we're on the same page because I know that one time they were told black bags and we're told no black bags, and now we're told we can't get the black bags, but they got to be in a certain direction. So I just want to make sure that when I relay this message, that we're all on the same page.
So Councilmember, the official word that we are putting out is no black bags.
So how do we get the word out to all those residents that have black bags everywhere? Can the Communication Department put some kind of cool video together and throw it all over social media?
They've, they've, yeah, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to.
No, that's okay because it's, there are black bags like all over the city.
We, we have been consistently messaging black bags and the prohibition on black bags at least forty-five or more days. So we will continue doing what we're doing to get the word out, you know, to let folks know that i-if they have black bags out there, they're going to have to open it up so we know it's hurricane-related, related damage or debris. The other alternative is for the property owners to take the black bags and put it in, in their containers. That's the official word.
Okay, so we're going to?
Well, we will continue to work with our communications to get, to get the word out. You know, with communications, sometimes it's very difficult to get the word out, especially if, if the, if the audience isn't listening.
Well, I'm just saying, I know that it was in the paper, but not everyone gets the paper or reads the paper, unfortunately.
We've put it out social media as recently as, I think, just last week, we did a special update just on debris removal. I think that went out either on Thursday or Friday.
On social media? What do you mean on social media?
And then, and then the electronic on the move, we also had reminders as well. So we're using all the, the media outlets that are at our disposal to continue to put that message out.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Stanky.
Thank you. We've received some feedback for, from some customers that where there was debris in front of a vacant lot, if you will, vacant property, and there was communication that they were only responsible for picking up residential debris, and if there wasn't a home there, someone occupying a home there, that, that it wasn't to be picked up. And they submitted a picture showing vacant land and debris in front of the vacant land. Could you bring clarity to whether or not a vacant property should have debris picked up in front of it?
If it's in the right-of-way, Councilmember, they have been picking up the debris if it's in the right-of-way. Now, one thing that we are doing, and we have asked for permission to go on to the vacant lots to remove debris that is not coming from canals, because I think Terry even mentioned this last week, that if you drive around the city, you'll see the unimproved lots and there might be a pile of vegetative debris with green taper on it. That indicates that that debris came, came out of the, out of the canal, right? So those are, that's being picked up. But if it was just, you know, let's say it's a dry lot that had hurricane debris on it, we have asked for authorization from FEMA so we can use our lot mowing program to go on those properties and remove the debris. Now, as of my last meeting that we had the other day on debris with staff, we had not gotten the authorization yet from FEMA to do that.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Shepherd.
Yes, I just want to commend the, all the service providers that are, that are picking up all the piles along the street, but I want to put a message out to the citizens. As I drive around the city, I'm seeing streets where all the piles have been picked up, but yet when you look in the grass in that first fifteen feet, you see litter and trash and small pieces of debris that the scooper is not going to pick up. And I'm asking the citizens, there is no service. Please go out there in front of your property, rake that debris up. It's not going to be picked up for you. If we don't pick it up, it's going to end up in our canals, it's going to clog up our sewers, and I'm seeing a lot of it. So please, please get out there and rake, and rake that up. I have one question because I'm a little confused with the trash bag situation as well. Not confused, but we have another issue. We have houses that don't have trash cans anymore. Are they allowed to use a trash bag for their regular household trash for their trash day, not hurricane trash?
That, that is correct. It, it needs to be separated from the hurricane. They can use black bags, any kind of plastic bag, you know, some sort of container for the regular trash, just regular.
And that's what I thought. So I'll put it out there to the residents, no trash bags for hurricane debris, just your household trash only.
And I'm sorry when I responded, Councilmember, you've come in through that and picked up the trash.
So to the residents again, please go out and keep our city a paradise and go out and just rake up the little bit of debris that's left after this, the service comes down your street to make our neighborhoods look beautiful again. I would appreciate that. Thank you very much. That's it.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate your update.
Thank you, Mayor, Council.
We'll move on to item nine G two, which is permit process update, Mr. City Manager.
Mr. Grambo would give you this week's update on where we are with improving the overall permitting process downstairs in Development Services.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Matthew Grambo, Special Projects Coordinator in the City Manager's Office. During my update tonight, I'd like to discuss three different topics. First, an update on the current process improvements that city staff members are working on with the overall permitting division, as well as specifically to the EnerGov system, followed by a conversation on some upcoming permitting counter changes with the hours and days that the permitting counter will be open. And I'd like to conclude with some information on the 2022 year-to-date issued permit data. So for our ongoing permit process updates, staff have been really busy working on configurations and reconfigurations in the EnerGov system to implement the new overall permitting division workflow reconfiguration project, I know that's a mouthful, by the end of the year or early in 2023. So this week, we are working on a couple of different things, and by Monday, December twelfth, we'll have two new types of configurations live in the EnerGov system. Firstly, all of our key disaster-related permit toggles will be live, meaning that customers for our permitting division will be able to apply for any of the Hurricane Ian emergency permits and not have to pay the permit fees, since those were suspended for one hundred and eighty days after Hurricane Ian. So when they go into EnerGov CSS, there'll be a toggle, they'll either select Hurricane Ian-related permit or non-Hurricane Ian-related permit, and that'll determine which, whether fees are charged for those permit types. So there was one final permit type that needed to be reconfigured for this toggle, and it was the renovation permit type. We had to pull that out of the overall residential construction, but that is complete and is being tested this week. Additionally, this week, we're working on final testing for several additional push-button permits, and as of next week, Monday, we'll have six types of push-button permits live in the system. That's the air-conditioned residential, emergency electric, fence residential, garage door replacement, and then two different types of roofing permits. Right now, the city is receiving over about fifty-five percent of permits that we're receiving are for roof replacements. And so we're creating two new push-button permits, one for shingle and metal and one for tile. And the reason for two different push-button permits is because the tile requires a ninety-pound inspection. So because no staff members are involved for a pure push-button permit until the inspection process, we wanted to make sure that the inspection templates were correct for those due to different roofing material push-button permits. So those two reconfigurations will be live on Monday. Additionally, we're continuing to work on our overall permit workflow restructuring. That was the little chart that we shared last week during our hurricane, during our, excuse me, during our permitting process update, and it includes the technical specialist and plans review reconfigurations. And as of this week, staff continue to meet and we're about eighty-five percent of the way configured on our test server. So we're working through the really specific details for each permit type and workflow, and we're hoping to have that ready for testing within several weeks to go live, hopefully by the end of the year or early in January. Additionally, we're working on the Phase Two push-button permits, which will be prepared for staff testing by next week, and that will include the plumbing re-pipe, pool heaters, pool solar shutters with awning, shutters with electric, soffit fascia, and the solar heater push-button permits. So those will be into our test server. Staff will be testing to make sure that there's no unexpected hiccups with those new push-button permits, and we'll be pushing those live in December. As we've been really focusing on ensuring that we're able to issue permits quickly, especially after Hurricane Ian, we're also focusing on the backend of things, which is with the inspections. And so tonight, during the consent agenda, consent item one involved additional inspection services as well as plans examiner services. So those additional resources will help us to stay on track with our inspections. But the other thing that went live several weeks ago, which is the full reactivation of EnerGov for inspections, is also going to assist in that process. When we did the temporary emergency paper permit process immediately after Hurricane Ian, that required all of our inspection documentation to be done through a separate spreadsheet outside of EnerGov, as well as in the paper files, which is about five thousand six hundred and twenty-two paper files. Since we've cut off the paper permits and everything is being processed through EnerGov as of November fourteenth, it makes it much easier to stay on top of the inspections. Anyone who applies for an inspection through, for a permit through EnerGov is able to see what their inspection status is by going to our EnerGov customer self-service platform. It shows which inspections have been completed, as well as allows them to schedule the next inspection for the given permit that they've applied for. And it also allows our inspector team here to coordinate our inspector resources to make sure that they're staying on top of all the different inspections that are required. So the combination of those two, the additional inspector resources, as well as the full utilization of all the features of EnerGov to coordinate our inspections, is really going to make an impact, especially in the coming weeks. And finally, I'm really pleased to announce that we've hired our new EnerGov application administrator, Mr. Joe Herslip. It's been a long time coming, very difficult position to fill. We've been attempting to fill this position, I think, since the second week in May, but he started this week on Monday. We're really happy to have him here and to have some additional capacity in our Information Technology Services Department. Most of our technical reconfiguration work has been completed really by one or two people in Information Technology Services. So I really have to thank Ms. Stacy Di Giacomo for really just every night pushing changes into EnerGov system at one in the morning, two in the morning, to not have the system go down so that folks can continue to utilize our system. And so having Joe onboard is really going to help us accelerate all these changes that we need to make in the system and are proposed. And also, it's going to be consistent with our continuous improvement strategy going into the next year for the system with our Service Delivery Excellence Advocacy Team. So happy to have him onboard. He started on Monday, is being onboard and is shadowing our team, and should be able to plug right in and assist with our reconfiguration work in the coming weeks. Secondly, tonight, I'd like to talk about some upcoming permitting counter changes. So starting on January third, on that Tuesday, we're going to be transitioning back to our pre-Hurricane Ian permitting counter hours and days. The permitting counter will be up and active Monday through Thursday, seven-thirty a.m. to four p.m., and then off on Fridays. Now, why are we doing this? There's a couple major reasons. The first and most, the largest reason is because we need to address an unbalanced allocation of our staff resources, primarily our permit technician positions. Currently, about eighty-three percent of our permits are being applied for through EnerGov CSS, that's our online portal, and about seventeen percent are being applied for at the permitting counter. However, due to how time-intensive the permit counter work takes, it's about a fifty-fifty split in our permit technician hours between the eighty-three percent on EnerGov CSS and the seventeen percent at the permitting counter. And these staff members are also responsible for responding to phone calls and emails and doing a lot of our customer service work for our permitting division. So we're really hoping to address that with slightly shorter hours Monday through Thursday, and then a permitting counter closure on Friday so that they can do all the back-office processing, not of the push-button permits. Again, those don't require any staff attention until after the permit's been issued, but definitely for our technical review, specialist review, and our plans examiner permits, as well as catching up on emails, phone calls, and doing the other tasks that our permit technicians are responsible for throughout the week. So that change will be in effect on January third. And then in additional, in addition, we're also working on developing some revised permitting counter procedures. We want to work with our partners at the CCCIA and Lee BIA to get their input on any potential procedure changes for our permitting counter. So we're planning on meeting with them. They attend our Monday morning EnerGov update meeting, and so we're speaking with them on that and soliciting their feedback on any proposed changes. But some additional information on those procedure changes will be provided to Council shortly, and that will probably go live sometime in mid to late January or in February. So finally, this evening, I'd like to talk about some data for 2022 year-to-date for our issued permits. So through, from January first, 2022 through the end of November, so the first eleven full calendar months of 2022, the city through Tracket and EnerGov has issued forty-eight thousand three hundred and fifty-three total permits. It was Tracket from January first through February twenty-second, and then EnerGov February twenty-second through November thirtieth. Of those forty-eight thousand three hundred and fifty-three, about four thousand six hundred and forty-two are the single-family home permits. And so the chart on the bottom left of the screen here really kind of tells a story of how we've done with issuing permits this year. You can see that first fifteen percent, that's when we were still on Tracket, our average daily, our average daily issued permits, so the amount of permits that city staff members issued per day was about, you know, in the one hundred to two hundred range. You can see a big spike right before February twenty-second, as staff members really pushed to reduce those legacy Tracket permits prior to going live with EnerGov. As soon as we went live with EnerGov, you can see at the end of February there, we were around the one hundred issued permits per day area. You know, it's no surprise and not, not news to anyone in this room, you know, we had a very troubled initial implementation and go live with EnerGov. There was a lot of unexpected issues that came from going live, and our issued permits reflected some of the difficulties in that transition. The first large spike that you see about a third of the way through the year, when we really were issuing large numbers of permits, that was when we had shut down and not accepted new applications during that week in April, where we did our task force and really addressed the permitting backlog, including having staff work over the Easter weekend. And additionally, we had another big push in May where we focused all of our attention over a weekend to really issue a large number of permits. So you can see one big spike in May, that was, I think, about five hundred and eight permits were issued over the weekend. Over the summer, we were a little bit better than our initial launch. We were in the two hundred to three hundred issued permits per day range. This was when we were really starting to work on our reconfigurations. Our roofing reconfiguration went live. There was additional system stability work that we had completed, but we were still in between that two hundred to three hundred range, which is really not where we need to be in a record permit year. You can see, obviously, at the end of September and in early October, when City Hall was closed due to Hurricane Ian, you're not issuing any permits through EnerGov. So it's all the way at the bottom, there were no permits issued then. In a couple weeks after Hurricane Ian, where there was that gap, we had allocated about thirty percent of our permitting resources to issuing EnerGov permits and about seventy percent to doing the paper permits that were coming in prior to fully reactivating the system. So, you know, at thirty percent staff, we were only issuing about a hundred permits during that time period. But then you can see right at the end of the year, where the data really increases, the number of issued permits really increased, that started on November fourteenth, when we fully reactivated EnerGov. We had the 2021 upgrade, we had the initial push-button reconfigurations, we had the reconfigurations of the single-family residential permit, and we also had the additional staff members that Council approved that had a couple months under their belt and were really familiar with the system at that point, and we've seen really substantial improvements. And actually, if you look at the entire year so far, the top ten days where the highest number of permits were issued, seven of those were after that November fourteenth date. So it really shows the progress that we've had, and it shows that all the work that we put in, the additional staff, the reconfigurations, the restructuring of the permitting department, all has had a big, a big impact, and it's all being realized relatively recently and really at the perfect time with the huge influx of Hurricane Ian permits. So as a comparison for this year, Lee County, for the same period of time, they're at forty-eight thousand four hundred and forty-four total permits. I spoke with the building official over there and received some updated data from them. So we're very similar to them in total permits and a little bit above them when it comes to the single-family home permits. They're at three thousand nine hundred and sixty-eight total for January first through the end of November. And then the chart on the bottom right, you can see the monthly single-family home permits issued for the first eleven months of the year. You can see we're pretty close at the beginning of the year when we were still on Tracket, and then in February and March, we were definitely below them as we were struggling through our implementation. However, we've started to get on the right track with issuing those single-family home permits, and we've been ahead of the county for the remainder of the year. So overall, you know, our work is not done. We have a lot of continuous improvements to do in the system. We're really taking a comprehensive approach to ensuring that we're not only addressing the immediate issues in the short and medium term, but also establishing- the immediate issues in the short and medium term, but also establishing a permitting department, as well as an overall permitting software system that is really going to be the gold standard for our region of Florida. And, you know, we're getting closer and closer every week.
So, um, members of city council, so despite the fact that we had less staff than, um, than Lee County, and despite the fact that we had significant operational challenges in the department, you know, associated with the rollout of the new software system, our employees worked extremely hard, and their numbers matched or surpassed what the county's efforts have been. And even though the county has more, more resources and didn't have to go through a troubled implementation this year since they've had that, uh, you know, under their belt. So I just make, point that out to just really thank the employees that have not given up. And I know today there was a speaker that said hordes of city employees are resigning and leaving the city. That is absolutely not true. And I know I've told you before that in development services, the turnover that we experience in, in customer service reps are not because they're leaving the city. It's because they're getting promoted to other positions within the city or within development services themselves. So hats off to our employees who have really worked hard all year long to get these permits out the door. And they've taken a lot of abuse, Mr. Mayor, from, uh, from the industry. Um, and I'm just, I, I need to make that a point because I, I met with staff this week, and I am, I am really troubled by the, um, um, the, the abuse that our employees are having to take day in and day out. And if our employers are getting to the point where they are breaking down, I will tell you, it's not necessarily because of EnerGov. It's the abuse that they're having to take at the front counter and on the phone, and, and that's unfortunate. And I just look to our friends in the industry, to police their members, and to hopefully restore some civility back in how they react to our employees, because they really are busting their butts to get those permits out the door. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. I'll open up the floor for any comments. Councilmember Shepherd.
Yeah, I just want to say thank you to all the people that work in that department for their efforts and hanging in there and, and their, their great achievement where we are today. Just want to say thank you.
Yeah, I agree. I mean, if you look back at where we were and where we are today, we've definitely improved by leaps and bounds. I'm not saying it was a, a pretty journey or anything, but at least we are making improvements. Uh, I think the industry itself kind of, uh, the standard that they look at is how many days it takes to get a permit. That's really all they're concerned about. But unfortunately, the data that you showed and the amount of permits that we are having with a improved system, then those permit times will come down. We have to put the work in, and that's what you've been doing. I want to thank you and all of staff. I know you're working diligently to make sure that our process is better. And I've told everyone that I've spoken to that I think at the end, uh, we're, we're going to be much, much better off than we ever have been in the 15 years that I've been around and dealing with our permit department. So I'm extremely optimistic, and I think we, we can see some light at the end of the tunnel. And I believe once we get through this process, we'll, we'll be just as good, or maybe even one of the better permitting departments in the area. So that's, that's what my personal goal is for us to achieve, and I think that we are definitely heading in that direction in order to accommodate our community in that fashion. Any other, uh, any other comments? Councilmember.
Yes, um, I think this is great too, because I kind of had a little bit of one-on-one and really learned what the system is going to do, and I think it's exciting and amazing. Um, and unfortunately, a lot of people had to wait a long time, but I think the wait's going to be worth it with what I see for the future. I have a question for quick direct access, which goes live on Monday, which I think is great, because you're from your home, from your car, right there in your fingertips. You can apply for a permit that goes live on Monday, correct? Which is amazing. But do you have, I did not write it down, and I apologize. I believe it was in the very beginning of your pages. What is the direct link to that without them going to Cape Coral website? Do you have the direct link?
We have the direct link, and I'm sure we could share it on our social media channels prior to the additional push button permits going live on Monday. Unfortunately, it's a little bit of a long URL.
Okay.
So it's, it's probably not something that I could probably say over the microphone. Um, you know, it's probably, it's probably, you know, 25, 30 characters, but there's multiple ways to, multiple ways to do it. It's the EnerGov customer self-service portal for the city of Cape Coral, and it's accessible either, there's a direct link that'll take you right to it. Otherwise, you can access it through our capecoral.gov website on the development services page.
Okay, all right. Well, thank you.
Councilmember Steinke.
Well, I would echo the mayor's remarks about it's been a rocky road, but coming out on the other end of it is going to be in everybody's best interest. And so I certainly appreciate the work that was done. Hindsight's always 20/20. Nobody likes Monday morning quarterbacks. And so the fact that we took the actions that we did to get the, the system where it is today is excellent. One thing, looking into the future, understanding cause and effect with, if you will, taking the restrictions off of getting the permits through the process. On the other end of that now, we should have a relatively large surge in the need for inspections and the need for COs. And are we prepared for that? I know we just approved, if you will, funding for assistance in that to allow that to happen, and the reason why we gave the approval is understanding the need for it. Do you feel that we're properly prepared that we will be able to get our inspections and our COs out in a timely manner as, as expected?
With the additional help that we're going to procure from the private sector, we're taking the, the appropriate action that we think we need to take in order to be able to deal with the onslaught of inspections that are forthcoming. And, um, and so I think the answer is yes. Outside of that, we have tried everything from overtime to mutual aid to calling other jurisdictions personally to, to get as many resources that we can from across the state into the city to help us with the inspections. And the response that we get from our sister cities and counties across the state is, hey, listen, we're short ourselves. We don't have any help to send you. So that's why we've had to turn to the private sector with these four contracts that, that ultimately we'll have in place to have the, the private sector have, um, help, you know, deal with, uh, with the extra workload that we've got.
Okay, thank you.
And if anybody has a, an idea of how to streamline the inspection process, you know, we're all ears. I know in certain instances now, we do, we take video, we take photographs and things of that nature to help speed up the process. And, and so we will continue to do things like that.
I know one, uh, if you're asking for it, I, it sounded like you were, one thing that I think would help is anytime entry to the property is required for an inspection. If there's, if there's some appointment process available that, uh, that the, that the resident or, you know, the, or the business can, can hone down when they need to be there. I know nothing is more frustrating to get a note on the door that said, hey, we, we were here to do your inspection. Sorry, you weren't here by. So, um, everybody's busy, including our inspectors. So i- if there's some type of a communication, uh, if we can improve the communication between, hey, here's when we're going to be there to inspect, and someone acknowledging that they know that there's going to be someone there for the inspection, it, it might save some trips, so to speak.
Okay, good feedback. We'll add that to Matt's to-do list to, to, to look into that. Again, we meet constantly, and Matt meets with the group every Monday morning, so we're going to add that to see what we can do to help get that notification out, or at least maybe give a, give somebody a block of time. I know in a community where I lived prior to, on the other coast, they would tell you, you can count on between eight and 12. They couldn't narrow it down any further, but at least, you know, at least, you know, half a day. It wasn't wasted that, um, so if we can work on that and at least identify a four-hour block, I think that'll be a major improvement.
Thank you.
Yeah, another suggestion there, I know they do it in Charlotte County, because I've utilized it before, is once you call an inspection, of course, a majority of those inspections, they are given to the inspectors in the morning, so they don't know exactly who has what at first until they, their task are, are given to them for the day.
Right.
I know in Charlotte County, you can go right on the webpage where, where you actually schedule the inspection, and it'll show who the inspector is that will be doing the inspection, and it'll also give a phone number. So you, as a resident or a builder or contractor, can physically call the, uh, you know, the inspector and say, hey, do you think? And a lot of times, they'll say, ah, we'll be there from somewhere between 10 and 12, or whatever the case may be. But that works pretty, pretty well in Charlotte County, because I've used it myself. So maybe something that.
Yeah, we'll, we'll also add that and see if Matt can work that issue and if we can make that improvement to.
Yeah, because it, you know, it's a hard, it's hard for a resident or a contractor to, to make a phone call here at City Hall, but if we have that available online somehow where they can go and say, okay, Mr. Smith is doing my inspection today. Here's a cell phone number. Let me reach out to him or her. And I think that could help that, some of that issue that you're talking about.
And vice versa, too. If, if the inspector has a contact number for the resident, and they're there, they do knock on the door, and the person doesn't come.
Yep.
They'll hit that number real quick, and maybe the person was in the back of the house, and they didn't, and they didn't hear that the, that the doorbell was rung or that the, it was knocking. They were waiting all day long.
That would be frustrating.
Yeah, so if they could just hit a quick phone call to say, hey, I'm here. Are you here? Oh, yeah, sorry, I'm out back. Bam, the inspection gets done, and you don't have to come back.
Yep. Okay.
Any other, any other questions or comments? Seeing none, thank you, sir, for the presentation.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to item 10, ordinances and resolutions. 10A is public hearing, our first ordinance is 12-22. Madam City Clerk, please read the title.
Ordinance 12-22, an ordinance amending the City of Cape Coral comprehensive plan by amending policy 1.15R of the future land use element to establish the Burnt Store Road District future land use classification, providing for severability and an effective date.
Thank you, Mr. Adaltry.
Hey. Good evening. For the record, Wyatt Adaltry, Plankton Coroner of the city's Planning Division. My credentials, BB obtained the city clerk's office. What we have before you today is ordinance 12-22. The city is the applicant, as this is a text amendment to our comprehensive plan. This establishes policy 1.115R of the future land use element, which would establish the Burnt Store Road District, which is a proposed future land use map classification. Now, some background as to why we're doing this. There have been several recent city initiatives and studies that focus on the northwest Cape Coral. Back in 2016, the city had commissioned the Northwest Vision Plan to determine a vision for that area, which resulted in really a lot of advanced planning for the Seven Islands site. City amended the future land use for the Seven Islands site to mixed use, created a sub-district for that site in a specific zoning district known as the Seven Islands, mixed-use Seven Islands District back in 2019. Basically, we've just had several initiatives that have recognized that the Burnt Store Road corridor will play a major part in future growth for, as you imagine, northwestern Cape Coral. The Northwest Cape Vision Plan recognized that properties along Burnt Store Road, particularly north of Van Buren Parkway, have characteristics that are quite different from the pre-platted nature, mainly that we have a lot of unplatted properties in that area, several which are greater than five acres in size, which, as you know, most of Cape Coral is pre-platted, oftentimes 10,000 square foot lots. So provides you opportunities for non-residential development, be it commercial or business park, or perhaps even industrial development along a major roadway such as Burnt Store Road. Recent events and other growth pressures illustrate the importance of a new land use classification for Burnt Store, Marriott RV Park, for instance, Hudson Creek Development on the east side of Burnt Store Road, with 3,500 dwelling units and 270,000 square feet of non-residential uses. There's been discussions, actually, a utility agreement for the extension of potable water sewer and irrigation to Hudson Creek. Also, city is prohibiting storage uses in the agricultural district recently, or rather earlier this year. So we're looking at basically setting the table for the Burnt Store corridor to become the next, call it Pine Island, if you will, Pine Island Road District. What are the changes we're making? Key language in policy 1.15, we have a table that shows the future land use classifications on the left, the, the left column, and those consistent zoning districts on the column to the right. So what we're doing is we are creating a new district, Burnt Store Road District on the bottom on that left column, and then consistent zoning districts. These would be new zoning districts that we are proposing to move forward in early 2023. These would include the Burnt Store Corridor Zoning District and the Burnt Store Overlay District. Uses permitted within the Burnt Store Road District include retail, office, office warehouse like manufacturing, institutional, multifamily, single-family residential attached uses, larger-scale commercial, retail, and government uses such as parks and park public facilities. New residential uses would only be permitted within a mixed-use building. New single-family detached, single-family semi-detached duplexes and all other standalone residential uses are prohibited in the Burnt Store Road District. We are looking, again, mixed-use and non-residential development for this corridor. We have plenty of opportunities for single-family and multifamily elsewhere within Cape Coral. We wish to preserve this district to the greatest degree possible for those future professional, commercial, retail, and industrial uses. Single-family uses, residential uses, semi-detached residences and duplexes that already exist, and they are few and far between in this area, would be permitted as conforming uses. Any residential developments within those mixed-use buildings would be developed a maximum of 25 units per acre, no minimum density. Standalone outdoor storage uses are prohibited in the Burnt Store Road District. Non-residential uses shall not exceed floor-to-air ratio of 1.0. That's kind of consistent with the commercial that we already have within Cape Coral. Now, this was transmitted to the state as a text amendment to the comprehensive plan back in early September. State and regional agencies went through their review process. It takes, it takes a while, and fortunately, had no objections to this, this idea. If this is adopted, this is the first of four processes. Basically, following this, we'd have a future land use amendment. We'd have to create a zoning district in the land development code, and then map that zoning district. So we are setting the table with this text amendment. Back in August, this was presented before the Planning and Zoning Commission, which had voted six to one to recommend approval of this ordinance. I'll stand by for any questions.
Thank you. And I'll open up public hearing. If there's anyone wishing to speak on ordinance 12-22, please come forward. Seeing none. Public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion to approve ordinance 12-22?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Is there any council discussion? Seeing none. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Shepherd.
Aye.
Steinke.
Aye.
Welsh.
Aye.
Hosden.
Aye.
Cummings.
Aye.
Gunter.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Long.
Aye.
Eight ayes, motion carried.
Okay, move on to resolution 244-22. Madam City Clerk, please read the title.
Resolution 244-22, a resolution providing for the vacation of plat for a portion of the Bayview and Bayshore Canal right-of-way and all underlying easements located adjacent to lots 23 and 24, block 158, Cape Coral, unit 4, part 2. Providing for the vacation of plat for public utility and drainage easements associated with lots 23 and 24, block 158, Cape Coral, unit 4, part 2. Property located at 5350 Bayview Court, providing an effective date.
This is a quasi-judicial hearing. Anyone wishing to speak or provide testimony must be sworn in.
Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Good evening, council and mayor. Justin Heller, senior planner with the Cape Coral Plankton Department. My credentials are on file at the city clerk's office. I have before you tonight a vacation of canal right-of-way at 5350 Bayview Court. More specifically, this is 498 square feet of canal right-of-way and all the underlying easements, and 1,471 square feet of plat easements associated with the western property line of lots 23 to 24 in block 158.
Could you put the mic a little closer to your mouth, please?
So this is a little over 13,000 square foot site. There's a single-family home. The property has single-family future land use with single-family zoning. They have large waterfrontage, about 200. have large waterfront edge, about 250 feet along the Bayview and Bayshore Canals. There is a small strip of unexcavated canal right-of-way that exists between their rear property line and the sea wall, and the owner simply wished to extend the property line out to the edge of the canal to replace their existing irregular sea wall with a newer one that is, is straight. So here's an aerial showing the property and the current zoning, which is R1, and all the surrounding properties have the same zoning designation. So we analyze this under section 3.4.5B. We found the vacation will not negatively affect navigability or visibility of boaters on the canals. All three utility providers have provided us with letters of no objection regarding the vacation. The easements will not provide any future transportation, public access, water management, or other foreseeable public benefit, and a six-foot public utility easement will be retained by the city around the new perimeter of the site. So staff is recommending approval of the vacation, and the hearing examiner also recommends approval with the conditions outlined in resolution 244-22. The hearing was held on July 12. I stand by for any questions you may have.
Thank you. I now open public hearing. If there's anyone wishing to speak on resolution 244-22, please come forward. Seeing none. Public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion to approve resolution 244-22?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any council discussion? Seeing none. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Shepherd?
Aye.
Steinke?
Aye.
Welsh?
Aye.
Cosden?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Gunter?
Aye.
Hayden?
Aye.
Long?
Aye.
Eight ayes, motion carried.
Okay, move on to ordinance 95-22. Madam City Clerk, please read the title.
Ordinance 95-22, an ordinance amending the City of Cape Coral official zoning district map of all property within the limits of the City of Cape Coral by rezoning property described as lots 7 through 14 in block 808 of Unit 22 Cape Coral subdivision. From professional to residential multifamily low zone, property is located at 1216, 1222, and 1302 Southeast 8th Place, providing severability and an effective date.
Okay, this is also a quasi-judicial hearing. Anyone wishing to speak or provide testimony must be sworn in.
Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
I'll turn it over to staff.
Vince Cataro, Development Services Department. Several months ago, I failed to introduce a new planner to the staff that had appeared before you, Candace Ford, but I was able to do that recently and introduce her when she was doing a presentation. So, I promised her I wouldn't do that again. I'd like to introduce to you Anthony Santora, who's one of our newest junior planners, and he's been doing a great job for us. He has a design and architecture background. And I had the opportunity to visit several cities this past summer during hiatus, and I went to Cleveland, and they're doing a lot of remarkable things down there. And Anthony was part of that process. So, we look forward to great things here from him, and he's gotten off to a great start. So, he's making his first presentation tonight in front of you. So I just wanted to introduce Anthony.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council. For the record, Anthony Santora, Associate Planner with the City Planning Division. My credentials are on file with the City Clerk's office. The project I am bringing forth for you today is an applicant-initiated rezone of a single property, or of three properties with a single owner. Their address is 1216, 1222, and 1302 Southeast 8th Place. These are located along Southeast 8th Place near Nicholas Parkway East in the city Centrum area. They are approximately 40,992 square feet, or roughly under an acre. They are within the service, urban services infill area, and the request before you is a rezone from the P Professional to the RML zoning, residential multifamily low. A little bit of background on it, the site is three parcels, as I mentioned. The parcels are currently vacant and undeveloped, and there's scattered professional development to the north, and as we'll see a little bit later, pretty much built-out multifamily to the south, mixed in with a little bit of single-family residential. The site does have access to all three utility services, and a little bit on the zoning history, it was amended from the R3 to P in 1990 for one of the parcels, and 2007 for the two remaining. And the flume was amended from multifamily to mixed use in 2003 for two of the parcels, and in 2005 for one of the parcels. According to the applicant LOI, the future development will be new multifamily housing, market-priced apartments, and I believe they are here and can speak a little bit towards that from themselves. Here, we can see the location of the property is highlighted in blue. We can see to the north, some of the professional development that has already occurred, very small scale. And to the south, you can see the primarily duplex and multifamily low density that has already occurred, and scattered within that, you will see a few single-family residential homes. Looking at the current zoning map, we can see to the southeast and west, there's predominantly residential multifamily low zoning. To the north, along Nicholas Parkway East, there is professional zoning. You can see the area in question is a little sliver of extension that comes down into the neighborhood. That is the area that is being requested to be rezoned from the professional to the multifamily low. So, in looking at the rezoning, according to the Land Development Code, we are required to go through and examine certain criteria in making our recommendations for approval or denial. And part of that is whether the proposed zoning district is consistent with the city comprehensive plan. It is, and we will see that a little bit more in-depth later on in the presentation. Another criteria is whether the full range of uses allowed in the proposed zoning district will be compatible with the existing uses in the area under consideration. As we had seen previously, the district to the south is residential multifamily low, already built out with small-scale residential units. The rezoning will be compatible with the existing units in the area. We also looked at whether the range of uses allowed in the proposed zoning district will be compatible with the existing and potential uses in the area under consideration. As was stated before, majority of the RML parcels have already been developed. Most of the professional parcels have been developed with so, with low-scale commercial professional uses, which match the fabric of the community. This will be compatible with the existing and potential uses in the area. We also examined whether the proposed zoning district will serve a community need or broader public purpose. The city does have a documented need for multifamily development, and so this is in accordance with that. We also looked at whether the characteristics of the proposed rezone area are suitable for the uses permitted. The site is an assemblage of the three parcels, just under one acre. They are along a local two-lane roadway. It is removed from the main intersection, which is Nicholas Parkway East, by about 250 feet, and it is already buffered by professional zone sites. The characteristics of the site are suitable for the uses that are being permitted for the RML district. We also looked at whether a zoning district, other than the district requested, will create fewer potential adverse impacts to the surrounding area. Looking at the surrounding area, the neighborhood is low-scale residential and professional. The only other district allowing multifamily residential is the RMM, which has a much denser requirement for the uses. Based upon that, the RML district creates the less potential adverse impacts on the community and is the most appropriate. In looking at the comprehensive plan, we examined Chapter 3 of the housing element and found it to be consistent. We also examined Chapter 4 Policy 1.7 in examining multifamily residential housing stock and its location in the community, and we examined the four primary guidelines with that. And we did find that the, that the project is consistent with Guideline 1, is consistent with Guideline 2 as well, is consistent with Guideline 3, and is consistent with Guideline 4, meeting all four of the guideline requirements for citing for multifamily residential units. We also examined the commercial citing guidelines to determine if the professional zoned spaces were more appropriate than the proposed RML. And what we found was that the site was consistent with only three components of the guidelines, those being major intersection, assembly, and intrusion, and it was inconsistent with five components of the guidelines. Overall, when we were looking at these sites, they were poor candidates for commercial professional development, given their size, location, and meeting, not meeting the criteria listed. That being said, we went through the process and are recommending approval of the rezoning application. This process was heard by the hearing examiner, and they did recommend approval as well. To this date, we have not received any correspondence for proponents or opponents to the proposal. And with that, I will stand by for any questions.
Thank you. I'll now open up public hearing. Anyone else wishing to speak on ordinance 95-22, please come forward.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Joe Mazurk was President of BGA and consulting here on behalf of Centrum Place LLC, the owners of this 0.94 acre site. Staff did an excellent job in making the presentation how this application meets the goals and requirements of the comprehensive land use plan. It is a good sighting for a project for market-rate housing. We are looking to do a, a, a market-rate housing project, not a string of duplexes in here. It was my, my wish to make this RMM so we could preclude duplexes, but we just couldn't get to the acre necessary to get that zoning. So the RML is the zoning requested with this application. It is our, our request that you follow staff's recommendation along with the hearing examiner's recommendation, and you vote to approve this rezoning. If you have any questions, we'll be available for them. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak on ordinance 95-22, please come forward. Seeing none. Public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion to approve ordinance 95-22?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Is there any council discussion? Seeing none. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Shepherd?
Aye.
Steinke?
Aye.
Welsh?
Aye.
Cosden?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Gunter?
Aye.
Hayden?
Aye.
Long?
Aye.
Eight ayes, motion carried.
Okay, thank you very much. We'll move on to ordinance 86-22. Madam City Clerk, please read the title.
Ordinance 86-22, an ordinance amending the City of Cape Coral comprehensive plan by amending the future land use map from commercial professional to single-family residential land use for property described as lots 10 and 11, block 2268, Unit 22 Cape Coral subdivision. Property located at 2707 Northeast 22nd Place, providing severability and an effective date.
Thank you. Anthony?
Good evening again, Mr. Mayor and Council. For the record, Anthony Santora, Associate Planner, the City Planning Division. Credentials are on file with the City Clerk's office. The case I'm bringing before you today is a small-scale future land use amendment brought forth by a single applicant, which is the property owner. The address is 2707 Northeast 22nd Place. This is located along Northeast 22nd Place and near Northeast 24th Avenue. The size is approximately 10,625 square feet, or roughly under just a quarter of an acre. It is located in the urban services transition zone, and the request is to amend the future land use map from commercial professional to single-family residential. So, some background on the information, this is a spot land use amendment. It is for one parcel that is located in northeast Cape Coral. Like I stated, it is located along, along a local two-lane roadway, which is northeast 22nd Place. It is currently vacant and undeveloped, with primarily vacant and undeveloped land around it to the north, east, and south. There's a few houses, which we will see, which were constructed very early on, back in the 90s and early 2000s, but the remainder of the block has remained vacant. The site does not have access to water and sewer currently, although they are slated to be provided there by 2025. The zoning for the property was amended from R3 to RD in 1990, and then from RD to C in 2019, and that is to coincide with the future land use map, which has always been commercial professional as it was adopted in 1988, when the first commercial, when the first flume was put together, and then officially in 1989, when the map was adopted. The applicant LOI states that the future development for the site, if the future land use is changed and the rezoning approved, will be for new single-family housing. So here, we can see the location of the site. It's mid-block along Northeast 22nd Place. To the right, we see Northeast 24th Avenue. That is a collector roadway, which is being expanded, or has, is slated to be expanded in the near future. You will see just to the right of the property, across the alley and across the buffering properties, a city-controlled parking area, and this area is designated as a commercial node. And you'll see the lack of development occurring on the, on the surrounding areas, and some scattered infill development occurring of single-family residential houses to the west, northwest, and southwest. So here, we can see the current future land use map, and we can see the block of commercial professional that exists today as part of that commercial node, and we can see the single-family residential that exists to the east, northeast, or west, northwest, and southwest. So, the request before us today is for the mute, future land use map, excuse me, to be amended to single-family, and here you see for that single, that single property to be amended to single-family residential. So as, as previous, with the Land Development Code, we examine the criteria for a recommendation for specific elements, and the first element is whether the proposed future land use amendment is consistent with the goal policies and future land use designations of the city comprehensive plan. We will go through this a little bit more in-depth a little bit later in the presentation, but through staff's review, the proposed amendment is inconsistent with many of the goals and policies of the city comprehensive plan. We also looked at whether the amendment protects the health, safety, and welfare of the community. And in looking at this, we determined that the immediate effects would be slightly positive to the health, safety, and welfare of the community, bringing in additional tax base, additional persons, and setting up the ability for single-family residential. However, when we look long-term, there is a slightly negative impact as we are removing the possibility for commercial development, which increases the amount of vehicle trips that could be necessary, increasing carbon emissions, and leading to a slightly less walkable community, which could ultimately result in clashes with pedestrian and vehicular traffic through the area. So, in that determination, it is our opinion that is inconsistent with the criteria laid out for that section. We also looked at whether the proposed amendment and all consistent zoning districts and the underlying permitted uses are compatible with the physical environments and features of the site. So, given the size of the site and the request, the only permissible zoning district would be the R1. The other district is much too large. The site does meet the criteria of the LDC and are compatible with the surrounding neighborhood to the east, and the proposed amendment is consistent with this specific criteria. We also looked at whether the range of zoning districts and all of the allowed uses in those districts are compatible with the surrounding uses in terms of land suitability or density, and that a change will not result in a negative impact on the community of traffic that cannot be mitigated through application of development standards in this code. Now, the proposed designation is less intensive in use and type than the existing designation of commercial, professional, and so it is consistent with this criteria, as there are elements that are within the code and the development standards that could mitigate the traffic if a larger volume of traffic was anticipated. But since it is a less intensive use, as you will see a little bit later when we get into the city impacts, it is actually a reduction in the amount of vehicular trips possible. So, the site, we also looked at whether the site is capable of accommodating all of the allowed uses, whether by right or otherwise, considering existing or planned infrastructure, roads, sanitary and water supply systems, stormwater parks, et cetera. The site does not contain water, as I stated, but the services are slated to be expanded there in 2025 as part of North One Service Extension. Stormwater does exist to the site. It drains the nearby canals, and again, the proposed designation is less intensive than the existing designation, and so the proposed amendment is consistent with this criteria. And then the other item is other factors deemed appropriate by the Commission and City Council. The Planning Commission did hear this case, as we will see a little bit farther on, and did not determine any additional items or factors, and of course, council itself has its own authority to deem appropriate other factors. So as we get into the comprehensive plan analysis, we again looked at Chapter 3, the housing element, and one of the things that we looked at in regards to this goal is to provide good quality housing in safe, clean neighborhoods, offering a broad choice of option in both type, single-family and multifamily, and tenure, owner, and renter occupied to meet the needs of present and future residents of the city, regardless of age and income status. That is from Chapter 3 Housing Element Goal. So, the proposed amendment will... So the proposed amendment will allow for the construction of new single family home on the property, which would add to the population pool. However, currently, the city does have an overabundance of single family zoned properties. Even within the immediate vicinity, there are many sites that are undeveloped with any single family residential, and there are approximately 22 just within the 500-foot radius of the buffer from the select property. And again, the only permissible zoning district, if the future land use amendment is put forward, is the R1 zoning district, which has limiting housing stock available specifically for the site. It would be single family residential. Based off of that, the ability for it not to have a broad choice of housing abilities, it is inconsistent with the goal of Chapter Three Housing Element. We also examined Chapter Four Policy 1.6, and that is that the city will continue to promote healthy communities and a diverse housing stock so that all persons may have an opportunity to reside in the community. To accomplish this goal, the city supports efforts to balance single family and multifamily residential stock. Again, if we're looking, single family residence currently is the majority of existing and available housing in the city, making up an estimated 80% of the total residential lots in the city, and that's data coming from the U.S. Census, the latest U.S. Census. And again, just looking at the surrounding area, there is a plethora of existing single family homes that are undeveloped or lots that are undeveloped that would meet the criteria, and so it is inconsistent without not having that diverse stock. We also looked at the commercial siting guidelines of Chapter Four Policy 1.13 and 1.14 to examine the site to determine the appropriateness of commercial at that location. And so when we examined the site, what we found, just examining the single site, is that is consistent with four components of the guidelines, that being compactness, integration, intrusion, and access, and it is inconsistent with four components of those guidelines being major intersection, adequate depth, assembly, and ownership. However, that's when we look at it as a single parcel. When we examine it as part of the larger commercial node, which it was determined as, the site is consistent with seven components of those guidelines and only inconsistent with a single component. Therefore, in looking at the site, it is a good candidate for commercial professional development in the future. We also examined Chapter Four Policy 1.15A. Single family residential density is not to exceed 4.4 units per acre. The site is currently 0.24 acres and all owned by a single entity. The applicant's intent and the allowable building use would be for a single family residential home. Again, the only permissible zoning district is R1, and it has a density of 4.1, meeting the required density, so it is consistent with Policy 1.15A. We also examined Chapter Four Objective Two, location of new commercial development within the city. New commercial development shall be so located to provide minimal vehicular trip lengths at or near transportation nodes and compatible with neighborhood residential uses. As we've kind of gone through, we see that the commercial area itself is a good candidate for commercial professional development and does meet many of the criteria and the goal and objective of Chapter Four Objective Two. We also did an analysis of the city impact in examining the existing commercial professional and the proposed single family, and what we saw is a minimal increase in dwelling units, small increase in population, small increase in school impacts, and net decreases of water use, solid, solid waste, and vehicular trips, all to be assumed with the less intensive use that is being proposed. We also had fire and police look at the proposed request. The property is currently served by Fire Station Five. It will be by Fire Station 10 when it comes online in 2024. The future development, if approved, will be generating roughly less than 15 calls annually and will have a minor impact with no negative effects on fire service delivery. Likewise, for police, the property is served by Patrol Zone NZ5, and the proposed development is only expected to generate approximately one call annually with extremely minimal impact to police services. Sorry for the, the more lengthy presentation and in-depth discussion, but I think it was warranted, as we do look at every matter very seriously, and as we're going through this project in particular, there is a small benefit to, immediate benefit to the possibility of remapping, but given that it is a spot land use amendment of a single parcel that is mid-block in a commercial, commercially viable location with the possibility for net negative effects in the long-term, staff is recommending denial of the application. This project was heard by Planning and Zoning Commission, and they voted unanimously to recommend denial of the application as well. We did receive two phone calls in regards to this project. The first phone call was from a resident who did not understand why she was receiving notification of a property that was not hers. After explaining the notification process, she thanked me and hung up the phone. We also did receive another phone call in the same vein from a property owner to the north, and after explaining the process and the project, they did want to offer their support to the applicant, and they were proponents of the proposal. So with that lengthy report, I will stand by for any further questions.
Thank you. I now open up public hearing. Is there anyone wishing to speak on ordinance 86-22? Please come forward. Over here, sir. Were you sworn in earlier, sir?
Aye, sir.
All right. Well, it's not a quasi judicial hearing, so you're fine.
Okay. My name is Marty Moore. I'm the Division President for Focus Homes in Southwest Florida. Good evening. I'm here because Focus Homes, we purchased this property with the intent of constructing a single family home. At that time, the site was zoned residential, and based on the surrounding area, there was no indication that any change would occur to that. As indicated in your report, this lot meets all the requirements necessary for R1. The entire surrounding area consists of single family homes and vacant land. Construction of this home would comply perfectly with the R1 zoning. The report states that the zoning was changed to commercial to help with future growth. However, this site is, will not meet the needs of a commercial developer, in my opinion. I believe it will remain vacant land based on its access and location. It lacks the required components. It does lack the major intersection, adequate depth, assembly, and ownership pattern. I think it's a stretch to say that there'll be future development, additional commercial development around that same area that would, that would help give it that ownership pattern. The report provides that by the planning board, the planning board themselves even note that the commercial property would have no direct access on an arterial or collector roadway, and the property would be limited by the need for dedicated commercial properties. It also states that it's listed, it listed as a mediocre candidate for commercial development. Zone changes like this should only be related to the health, safety, and welfare of the community. The change to commercial does nothing to significantly improve any of those three things, and this location is truly not a good place for commercial property. If you go out to this property, if you can see it on the map, you wouldn't feel like a commercial or public building would need to be back there. It looks like it should be a future residential neighborhood. To compound with that, Focus Homes executed a contract to build a home on this property and is prepared to start construction. The family on the other end of that contract is being significantly impacted by this change. I'm asking the city to approve this change to R1 zoning. I think the property is much better suited for that. I don't think it will have the interest in the commercial property that stated in the report, and I thank you all for your consideration in that matter.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak on ordinance 86-22? Please come forward.
Good evening. For the record, Wyatt Daltry, Planning Team Coordinator, again with the City of Cape Coral. Looking at Lee County property appraiser data, this, this property was purchased by Focus Homes back in October of 2021. At that time, the site had both commercial professional, future land use, and commercial zoning. Just wanted to clarify that on the record. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to speak on ordinance 86-22? Seeing none, public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion for ordinance 86-22?
Motion to deny.
Second.
Is there any council discussion? The only thing I'll say for the record is, you know, for me, this is a classic case of spot zoning, and for that reason, I will support the motion that was made. If it was zoning in an entire area that wanted to be changed, that could be a different story, but just one parcel in such a large area that is already, has a, has a use of a commercial use to change it to residential, I can't support. So for that reason, I will support the motion that was made. Councilmember Cummings.
Yeah, I agree with you, Mayor. I agree with you, Mayor, especially, you know, lacking commercial. I think, you know, looking at this map, knowing that residential is literally across the street, we can definitely have an opportunity for a smaller business, such as like a dental office that can go into that area. I would highly recommend keeping it commercial. Thank you, Mary, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Welsh.
Yes, when I did my research on this property, it's the same thing that when Wyatt came up. I looked to see when the property was purchased and when, what type of property it was, so I'm glad he came up and clarified that it was purchased when it was zoned commercial. So that's the reason why I'm not, that's why I'm going to support the denial of this. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Seeing no other comments, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Shepherd.
No.
Steinke.
Could you repeat the motion, please?
So it's a motion to deny ordinance 86-22.
Thank you. I would vote aye.
Can I take my vote back? Aye.
Welsh.
Aye.
Cosden.
Aye.
Cummings.
Aye.
Gunter.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Long.
Aye.
Eight ayes, motion to deny, carried.
Okay, thank you. We'll move on to ordinance 87-22. Madam City Clerk, please read the title.
Ordinance 87-22, an ordinance amending the City of Cape Coral engineering design standards by repealing Sheet D-11 of Section D driveway access and replacing the repealed sheet with a revised Sheet D-11 attached here too and incorporated herein by reference, providing severability and an effective date.
Okay, thank you. Before I turn it over to staff, I just wanted to say one thing. Anthony, welcome, and you did an excellent job tonight.
Thank you very much.
And I'll turn it over to Mr. Earl Chisen.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Mike Earl Chisen, Public Works Director. I'm not sick. I was at the Bucks game Monday night, so great game. Just wanted you, bear with me, give me a little. We're only changing one sheet in the engineering design standards. Basically, we work with the CCCIA to modernize the ordinance. The ordinance was in place from the 90s. We're seeing a lot different housing types come into the community, different driveway designs, and so we work with them to basically allow for when you have a two-car garage with a single or a triple car garage, a little bit bigger driveway. We're beefing up the approach or the flares on the side, making them a little thicker, adding some rebar, and then referencing a new sheet for any houses that are being built on a major roadway that require a circle drive, so we're referencing that sheet. So if a developer is building on a major roadway, they know not to look at this sheet, but, but a different sheet. That's all for the presentation.
Okay, thank you. I'll now open up the public hearing. Is there anyone wishing to speak on ordinance 87-22? Please come forward. Seeing none, public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion to approve ordinance 87-22?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any council discussion? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Shepherd.
Aye.
Steinke.
Aye.
Welsh.
Aye.
Cosden.
Aye.
Cummings.
Aye.
Gunter.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Long.
Aye.
Eight ayes, motion carried.
Okay, move on to ordinance 98-22. Madam City Clerk, please read the title.
Ordinance 98-22, an ordinance amending the City of Cape Coral Code of Ordinances, Chapter Two Administration, Article Six, Pensions, Division One Police Pension, to amend Section 2-121.6 Benefit Amounts and Eligibility to Provide for a Maximum Retirement Benefit Adjustment, Providing for Severability and an Effective Date.
Lisa Sanego, Human Resources Director. This ordinance just codifies the change in the city ordinance to codify what was already negotiated with the Fraternal Order of Police for their 10-122 contract, and that was ratified also by council already. So this ordinance just then will match the contract.
Okay, thank you. I'll now open up the public hearing. Is there anyone wishing to speak on ordinance 98-22? Please come forward. Seeing none, public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion to approve ordinance 98-22?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any council discussion? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Shepherd.
Aye.
Steinke.
Aye.
Welsh.
Aye.
Cosden.
Aye.
Cummings.
Aye.
Gunter.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Long.
Aye.
Eight ayes, motion carried.
Okay, move on to Item B, which was introductions. We do not have any introductions listed tonight. So Item 11 is reports. Councilmember Shepherd, report.
No report, just other than we had a pretty tough year and we're beginning a new year and I'm looking forward to a new year. That's it, thank you.
Councilmember Steinke.
Nothing to report, but just appreciation for consideration in the adjustment to the 2023 calendar.
Councilmember Welsh.
No report, but it is December, so I told you all I was going to bring this up again. I would like a second to review the city's policy on parking of boats and trailers. I think it's, as, as we just saw this driveway revision, houses are getting bigger and people are, are building different types of, you know, structures and driveways, and I think it's a good time to review that. I want to, want to eliminate some things, like we can have a pop-up trailer, but you can't have like a travel trailer. So I think you can have a boat, but you can't park your BMX, you know, or you can't park a trailer that would haul a four-wheeler if you want to do something like that. So I want to open up and loosen some of the restrictions that we have to allow people to enjoy their land that they purchased, no matter what it is.
I second that.
So you'll second me?
Yeah, I second that.
All right. Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Cosden, report.
Yes, I attended the National League of Cities Conference in Kansas City, Missouri. It was a really good conference, and I have a couple ideas I'm going to bring back to staff, and that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Cummings.
I have no report, but I just want to do a big reminder for people that are watching for the Christmas tree lighting tomorrow. Very excited. I hear the Grinch is going to be here, and I believe movie night, so I would love to see this place filled with a lot of families tomorrow evening, so that's my report. And Merry Christmas.
Thank you. Councilmember Hayden, report.
I did want to commend the police officer, and I can't remember his name. I didn't write it down, but the officer who jumped in a canal last week and saved, broke the window and saved a woman whose car was filling up with, with water and...
It's Officer Johnson, correct?
Officer Johnson, sir. Officer Johnson?
Yes.
Okay. Did an incredible job pulling the woman out of the car, getting her to shore, and I just want to commend him and the police department, everyone that was there that night for, for all their efforts.
Thank you. Councilmember Long.
No report.
Okay, I, I also want to agree with Councilmember Hayden. Officer Johnson's professionalism in a, in a, in a crisis like that and the way he reacted, that's, that's the type of officers we want representing our city, so I'd like to, like to just say he did a great job and, and we're glad we have officers like that on our department. As far as my report is concerned, back on November 17th, I did attend the Chamber Award Night at the FOS Furniture Store. That's typically been a yearly event, but because of COVID, it, it was canceled. But another great... But another great event where we recognized our first responders here in our city, and I just wanted to commend those that were recognized that, that particular evening. Also, on November 21st, I attended the Southwest Florida League of Cities Executive Committee Meeting. On November 22nd, I did attend the Lee County School Board oath of office ceremony for our new Lee County School Board Representatives. And on 12, 1 and 12, 2, I did attend the Florida League of Cities Legislative Policy Committee Meeting up in Orlando with, also attended the Florida League of Cities Board of Directors and the Florida League of Mayor's Board of Directors. And real quickly, I believe that staff has provided the council with the 2023 Florida League of Cities Legislative Action Agenda. But real quickly, the priorities is enterprise fund transfers, mobility plans, short-term rentals, accessible housing, and water resource planning and comprehensive watershed management, and our policy positions will deal with property tax protection, residential zoning, transportation funding, and water and wastewater plant operator licensing. So you can, you can review that. I think that was sent to all council. Also, during that meeting, I was appointed to the Florida League of Cities Executive Board, so I'm honored to serve on that particular board as well. On 11, 2, I did attend, I believe with Councilmember Long, Lee County Homeless Coalition 17 Annual Benefit Dinner and Auction. Also, I attended, I believe with Councilmember Cummings, and I can't recall who else was there for the Councilmember Long for the Holiday Festival of Lights, another annual great event. It's great to see the community and the residents out there, especially in these trying times after the hurricane. Also, on December 5th, I attended a roundtable meeting with Leader Grant from the House of Representatives and Representative Rommel. The discussion was basically the hurricane rebuilding efforts, not only for our community, for the county, and for the state. So it was a great roundtable discussion as well. Lastly, this morning, I did attend the annual Lee County Legislative Delegation Meeting where I outlined some of our priorities we have as a city. I just mentioned a few of them. Hurricane recovery mitigation resiliency, hurricane relief reimbursement, revenue replenishment for Lee County and all of its cities, to include but not limited to deferred property tax assistance and hazard mitigation funding assistance. So they were some of the priorities that I outlined in our discussion today. One other last thing I wanted to bring up, one of our staff members in our office will be coming up on a six-month review. I know we just did reviews for our staff members, but this is an opportunity where the probationary period for this particular employee will end. At that time, we have an opportunity to discuss their, their pay range. They can receive up to a 10% increase, anywhere from zero to 10%. So I felt as a, as a council, we should have that discussion. So if possible, I would like to have a special meeting on January 11th at 3:00 p.m. We do have a regular council meeting that day, so like we have in the past, we'll have a special meeting on that particular day, 3:00 p.m., to discuss staff personnel issues. So I just want to get a consensus on that, on that particular... Madam City Clerk?
Can I confirm that council would like that meeting in Conference Room 220A?
Yes, that's, that's what my intent was, like we have in the past. The conference, we'll utilize Conference Room 220A for that, for that particular meeting. So if I don't have any, any opposition, I'll ask Madam City Clerk to please schedule that meeting and put that on our schedule, and our staff will get that on to our calendars. And that's all I have. Madam City Attorney, report.
I have no report.
And Mr. City Manager?
No report. Mr. Mayor, other than to say thank you to all of our staff in Public Works, Communications, Parks and Rec, and other departments that worked to set up the front lawn of City Hall for this year's holiday tree lighting, and I look forward to seeing you all there tomorrow. Thank you.
Okay, time and place of, we have a regular meeting scheduled, Cape Coral City Council, for Wednesday, December 14th, 2022, beginning 4:30 p.m. here in council chambers. And do I have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Meeting adjourned.